Welcome to tonight's meeting. Glad to have everybody here, and I'm glad to be in the chair up here tonight. I'll do my best to lead us through this evening. Vanessa, would you please call the roll?
Vice Chair.
Here.
President DeBarty.
DeBarty, here.
Secretary Hatcher.
Here.
Trustee Fleming.
Here.
Trustee McKnight-Mourning.
Here.
Trustee Millschain.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
Support.
In support, thank you. Is there any discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? The agenda stands approved, thank you. Tab A in the packet tonight, the recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the minutes of the October 24, 2023 monthly meeting as submitted. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
Go ahead.
In support, thank you. Any discussion about those minutes, any corrections that anybody has? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes stand approved, thank you. Citizen participation, WCC Education Association, I see Ms. Kissel coming forward, welcome.
Thank you so much. Well, it's November 2023. It's not been very long since my last remarks, but in that time, the WCCEA Board did approve the grievance for arbitration, and we have submitted our paperwork to the MEA for the next steps. There are several letters of agreement that are still in our queue, and I'm hopeful that VPI Tucker and I will work through a few of those tomorrow. Tonight, you will also approve the sabbatical project for winter 2024 and grant emeritus status to 12 former staff and faculty, and who will be taking with them 261 collective years of knowledge. So many of my colleagues have taken time to watch and discuss the recorded board meetings as we work through our daily stress that comes with the cadence of the semester, and I want to report on some of those thoughts. I was obviously frustrated last month, as the issues causing the most stress were actually playing out in real time. Situations like those do not rely, give me the chance for reflection and thoughtfulness, but there has been a common theme, though, discussed among the faculty since then. So during these board meetings, it's obvious that every person in this meeting wants to do their very best for this institution. We're proud of our work, we strive to do our best, we want to share our successes as much as possible. However, there is a disconnect, and this is one that Trustee Hatcher has noted. This disconnect is something that Dr. Blanca and I discussed during our meeting this week, and while there is praise for the institution, what is perceived by others not in this room is the fact that the praise does not seem to reach those who are outside of this room. As one of my colleagues so aptly noted, "The people are the institution." What is happening is that the more siloed we become, the more us versus them that is created, and endorsed in conversation, or through inaction, or sometimes, you know, with purpose, the more disconnected we feel. So, so much of our conversation revolves around being advocates for our students and for the community, but for that to happen, we have to advocate for all of us in this institution. This is hard work, and this is hard work that needs to be done at all the levels, and we want to know that our supervisor, or their supervisor's supervisor, is advocating for all of us. I do believe that Dr. Blanca has an interesting idea on how to work on this, and I would respectfully ask that the Board be active in these discussions, so that the WCC workforce will be on a path to thrive in our ever-changing world. Thank you. And I do have to leave tonight, I'm double booked, it's a Thursday, so Dave Wooton is here, so if you have any questions for him, he'll be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any public comments? President Blanca, please.
Well, Ms. Kissel.
Yes.
Is congratulations in order?
For my council.
Your election?
I am a council-elect member of the City of Belton, yes.
Congratulations.
Are there any public comments tonight? If so, please come forward. Seeing none, Vanessa, are there any written communications we need to know about?
None were received.
No written communications, all right, thank you. We'll turn to special reports. Provost Blakey, could you tell us about the Veterans Center update, please?
Good evening. Well, today, since we have our board meeting on this Thursday, the 10th, we had Veterans Day celebration today, and so we thought it would be a good opportunity to do an update on the Waddams Veterans Center. So, um, WCC, we, as an educational institution, we are the choice of almost 600 veterans, military-connected, independent students. So our students are veteran students who have served in the active military, we have military-connected students who may be serving on active duty at the National Guard or the U.S. Reserve, and we also have military dependents who get services through the Waddams Center as well. Over the last five years, WCC has earned gold status, and to get veteran, to be a veteran-friendly school and have the gold status, it means we have a designated coordinator and a designated space on our campus. Carol Osborne is our designated coordinator. We have an active student-veteran association, which is the WCC SVA. We provide veteran-specific services, we have a specific vet advisor, Ashley Starks. We have a veteran-specific website, and we have a rigorous evaluation process for military transcripts. So at the Waddams Center, we provide veterans help with accessing their benefits, academic advising, computer printing services, you can see study space there where they can print and use computers, help accessing other community campus resources, update information on any recent VA benefits, and just a great place for them to gather and make friends. Our Student Veteran of America Club on campus, it provides students with leadership and growth opportunities as they transition to civilian life. It also builds community outside of Washtenaw, and it provides networking at the SVA National Conference, where our SVA members are provided support to go to the National Conference each year. We also have a lot of success stories, so our SVA has joint events with U of M's Student Veteran Association Group. We hear that veterans from outside of Michigan moved to Ann Arbor and enroll at Washtenaw to more easily transition to the University of Michigan. This past year, we had five veterans who are active in SVA successfully transferred to U of M, including Rebecca Spencer, if you remember, she was our speaker at last year's event, and we had a speaker this morning who also is successfully transferring to the University of Michigan in January. So our community partners, and I think Carol especially has done a really good job of expanding the partnerships that we have in the community, so the Erwin Pritzgorn American Legion Post 46, members from that American Legion come and meet with our students, they donate coffee, they sponsor lunches, they also provide assistance to students and their families as needed, and they also, as in this morning, participate in and support our Veteran Day activities. The Erwin Pritzgorn American Legion Post 46, we hosted the 100th anniversary of them being established, that was done on August 30th of this year, and our very own Carol Osborne received the bronze award and medal in recognition of her outstanding attributes demonstrated in the veteran community, so that's where she won the award at that event. We also are lucky to have two partnerships with the Department of Veteran Affairs. So we have the representative from the Veteran Success on Campus, John Sugini, so he comes to campus every week to meet with students and talk about career planning, and also talk about how they can better access their educational benefits, and then we also have a partnership with VITAL, which is the Veterans Integration to Academic Leadership Program, and Brittany Terrell is a licensed social worker, and she makes sure that students are accessing their healthcare benefits as needed. We also have a partnership with the Red Cross Therapow, and so Darby, the Waddams Center therapy dog, comes every other week and hangs out with the students, brings calmness as she mingles with our veterans, they love having Darby visit. So this past summer, we hosted the Washtenaw County Vet Fest, which was the second year in a row. Vet Fest is an all-day event that's held in late July each year, so veterans and their family members gather, it's a community event where veterans and their families are all invited, but we also have lots of community partners who provide services to veterans come and support the event with resources, information for family members and veterans. So along the bottom there is just a few of the partners that participated in this year's Vet Fest. We were very lucky to be able to partner with the State of Michigan, to land a helicopter of this size requires State of Michigan permission, with the Army National Guard Suffrage Base, and we had this helicopter land in Community Park before the event, and it was available during the entire event for tours, so it was certainly a highlight of this summer event. So some other ones, where you see family members, there's lots of food, a lot of camaraderie for that event, including a dunk tank with one of our officers, who's a veteran. Um, the WCC Foundation, through the generous gift of Timothy and Lori Waddams, we, that's why the, the Veteran Center is named for them, their generous gift through the Foundation supports the center with coffee, snacks, other veterans, also scholarships for veterans, gift cards for gas, for food, and they also sponsor veteran lunches on campus, and we're very thankful for their generous gift. The last two years, the WCC Fitness Center has partnered with the Waddams Veteran Center to host the Murph Challenge. The Murph Challenge is honors the sacrifice and service of a fallen Navy SEAL named Lieutenant Michael P. Murphy, and the Murph Challenge is a one-mile run followed by 100 push-ups, then 100, excuse me, 100 pull-ups, then 100 push-ups, 300 squats, and then a one-mile run. So again, that was a very popular event on campus, and we've done that for the last two years. So today, earlier, we had our, our veteran celebration, we had a beautiful flag raising at sunrise, we had breakfast, which was provided to our WCC veterans, not only our students, but also our employees who are veterans, and then that was followed by the veteran ceremony. We had, you could see them coming in at sunrise for the flag raising. Here's some more pictures from the event. And thank you again for your support of the Waddams Center and our students.
How many people complete the Murph Challenge?
I think we had about 25 veterans who completed that event. It's pretty amazing.
Remarkable.
Yes.
Any other questions? Trustee DeBarty.
At Murph Challenge, is it open to the public to try it?
I'm sorry?
Can we try it?
That's a good question. I think that's, it's only for veterans, for that event. But I will check and see if they'll have, if they could have guests next year.
Any other questions? We're certainly grateful for the Waddams and their, their generous support, and always nice to see them when they can come to campus.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, we have annual student and financial aid profile, fall student profile, Provost Blakey, welcome back. Thank you.
Thank you. So it's November, and it's time to talk about our profiles, so we'll be talking about the annual profile for 2223, and our fall profile for 2023, and our financial aid profile, which covers 2223 as well. So the annual profile is, again, 2223, but we'll have some historical data which will be presented, our financial aid profile, which also covers five years, and our fall profile, which covers fall, five falls, five falls of data. So for these enrollment profiles, all of this data is reported to the state, the fall enrollment is based on our official federal count date, which is October 15th, and the infographics, which I think you have at your table, kind of give a nice overview of the data that's in this presentation. So if we look at headcount, where students are counted once, no matter if they're enrolled in multiple semesters, we had 20,284 students, unduplicated headcount, enrolled in credit classes, so over fall '22, winter '23, and summer '23, we had over 20,000 students. We had 8,587 new students, that's an increase of 820 or 11% new students over the prior academic year. This gives you a sense of the new student graph, you can see over the last five years, our total student headcount, and then the yellow is the new students. You can see kind of 2021, when we had a slight dip responding to the pandemic, and then we've steadily been increasing since then. We look at the gender, pretty much for 2223, we're 50% females and 50% males. You can see, again, during the pandemic, we had a dip in the number of male students, that's primarily due to the UA not having their summer program with us during the pandemic. The gray area at the top of the graph on 2223 indicates about 400 students who indicated that, that we don't have a gender, we have increasing numbers of students who are not reporting that. If we look at our minority composition over the last year, our minority composition was 39%, that was an increase from 36.4 in the prior year. This minority composition is based on students who reported ethnicity. If we look at the minority composition of Washtenaw County, that's at 30.6. So again, we're enrolling a higher percentage of minority students than what's in the county. You see there the breakdown, we certainly had an increase in our Asian students, as well as our Hispanic students over the last year. And again, in similar to gender, we had about 10% of, a little over 2,000 students who did not specify ethnicity during the year. This graphically shows last five years, you can see we've had increases in our Asian students, as well as the two or more category, and our Native American students, or, excuse me, our Hispanic students. If we look at students who come in and the academic level, the academic, that, the level that they come in as a new student, you can see for 2223, we had 9% of the students who came in were college grads. If you look at that blue bars along the bottom, you can see that that group has been declining. So at one point, we had close to 17% of our students were college grads coming in, that's been declining over the last few years, and so we have increasing numbers of students who are attended college previously, as indicated in the green bar, so we have students who perhaps have not graduated yet, but are enrolling with us. 10% of our new students this past year were current high school students, and 54% of our students have prior college, as they're coming into Washtenaw. If we look at the average age, again, these are the bars of the different groups, you can see that during the pandemic, we certainly had a dip in our 18- to 20-year-olds, and we had a strong increase in those individuals over the last year, that's the green bar on the graph. So this last year, we had our average age was 27.4, our median age was 22. So again, 50% of our students are below age 22, 50% above. Annually, our non-credit enrollments are at 5589 this past year, these five areas accounted for 60% of the non-credit enrollments, again, our motorcycle safety program is very strong, our GED prep, and our, well, is our PE, you know, physical education activities. If we look at how the enrollments were broken down over the last year, so our face-to-face enrollments, the graph shows by our individual divisions, for 2223, our face-to-face enrollments, again, each time a student takes a class, it generates an enrollment, so if they are enrolled in four different classes, that would generate four enrollments. So 42% of all the enrollments over the last year, over 29,000, close to 30,000 of the enrollments, were face-to-face enrollments. So you can see, certainly during pandemic, those dropped down severely, and then they're, they're climbing back up. If we look at the last year of the distance learning, this would include our DL, as well as our virtual, which would be our synchronous, our asynchronous, or synchronous DL online, and as well as our asynchronous online, there was over 30,000 enrollments in the last year, that was 43% of the enrollments. And again, over the last five years, you see how those enrollments are varying by division. Our next kind of enrollment is virtual. Virtual, we didn't have until the pandemic, virtual is online, but also synchronous with times. In 2223, we had nine, or a little over 9,100 enrollments, and that was 13%, and you can see how those are divided by division as well. Blended is where we use, part of the class is online and part of the class is in person, we had 17, over 1,700 enrollments in 2223, 2% of all of our enrollments were in a blended So if we look at students, and here we're counting students in one of three categories, the student is a DL-only, we're, and that's again, DL or virtual only, they have face-to-face only classes, or they have a mixture of face-to-face and DL. So again, the students over the year are counted in one bucket. So for 2223, 46% of our students were DL-only over the year, 26% were taking a combination of DL and face-to-face, and then 28% of our students were taking face-to-face classes We look at our annual college awards, our total awards for this past year were 3,583, 20, over 2,100 were certificates, those were down slightly, 1% over the prior year. We gave out 1,430 associate degrees, that was also down slightly over the last year, and those are awards posted four times over the year, at the end of fall semester, at the end of winter, and two times during the summer. We look at where we've had significant increases in some of our awards, our pre-engineering science transfer, police academy, automotive service tech, our general studies degree, again, that's a fairly newer degree for us, but that continues to increase in terms of students following that program, and our MTA, our Michigan Transfer Agreement, is a 30-credit certificate that's recognized across the state, it's 30 credits of Gen Ed, that continues to be a very strong certificate program for us, it represents 53% of all of our certificates, and again, it's 30 credits of Gen Ed that are distributed, and students can transfer that block of credits to any four-year institution in the state. Again, the infographic has the information on both sides, on the, the two columns in the middle are the enrollment facts for the year, and the right column is fall 2023, so these are for the annual, this is for fall, on both sides. Now I'll transition to the financial aid profile. For 2223, we had $34 million, over $34 million given out, that was a 9% increase over the prior year. If we look at headcount and of students getting dollars, so this graph shows the total headcount, the green area shows the number of students who are actually getting financial aid, and the bar shows the number of dollars. For 2223, we had 5,963 students who received, again, 34, over $34 million in financial aid. Approximately 11.2 million of that financial aid was used to pay for tuition this past year, an additional 901,000 was used to purchase books and supplies at the WCC bookstore. If we look at the types of financial aid, the sources, as the report lays out, we have federal financial aid, money from the state, WCC financial aid that, that's provided, and external, the foundation would be considered an external source of aid. You can see by far, the federal government is the largest source of financial aid. If we look at types of financial aid, excuse me, grants, was 16 million, that would be grants, are, is money that student does not have to pay back, scholarships, which are generally academic-based or community-based, our work-study, where students are working in order to get their financial aid, generally working on campus or at the Park Ridge Center, and loans, which are financial aid dollars that have to be spent, paid back, was over $14 million this past year. If we look at the financial aid from WCC, you can see the headcount, and then the dollars. In this past year, we had 378 students who received $730,000 of financial aid, and this was financial aid that was processed through the Financial Aid Office this past year. The 1920, that kind of, yes?
Does this include foundation scholarships?
No.
This is directly out of our budget?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I want to speak to the 1920, the kind of large gap, the increase there, that's when we were transitioning a lot of our classes to online, and we were covering our online tuition for in-district students is higher than for face-to-face classes, and so we were doing a scholarship to, so the student, if they wanted to take a face-to-face class and we didn't have it, and they were taking online, we are covering the difference in that tuition amount. So, other WCC funds that are in our scholarship budget, but that are not administered through the Financial Aid Office, these are things that kind of happen automatically, is our emeritus scholarship, that's for individuals who reside in Washtenaw County and who are 65 years or older, we had over $474,000 in the emeritus scholarship, you can see that 39% of that money, 183,000, went to credit classes, and 61%, 290,000 went to pay for non-credit classes. We also have our work property in district, so for individuals who are outside the county, who work at least 30 hours in the county, they are allowed to pay in-district tuition, or we also have individuals who may have out-of-district tuition but perhaps own property, they've perhaps bought a house, but they haven't lived in the state long enough, so we pay the difference between their out-of-district tuition and their in-district, that was $136,000 this past year. And our partner high schools are where we have, our partner high schools, and we have students, because of school of choice, or sometimes our schools that are kind of on the border of the county, if they have out-of-district students and the high school's paying for those students, we do cover the difference between out-of-district and in-district tuition, so that the partner high schools only pay, in Washtenaw County, only pay in-district So the WCC Foundation, here, we talked about that, they gave 100, $1.3 million in scholarships to 1,183 students, there's a decrease, a little, slight decrease over the last year. You can see, over the last five years, the Foundation has averaged $1.36 million in scholarships, those scholarships are used for tuition books and other educational expenses. If we also look at what the Foundation provides in terms of emergency grants, you see in 2223, they provided over $40,000 in emergency grants to 128 students. You can see we had kind of a large drop in 2021, but we had a lot of CARES dollars that were available to students, and so in many cases, those CARES dollars were used prior to the emergency grant dollars. So Michigan Reconnect, we've talked about this program in the past, this program is for individuals who are, who have lived in the State of Michigan for a year, who are 25 years or older and have not yet got their associate degree or bachelor's. That program's been in place for three years, and you can see for 2223, we had 861 students who received over $1.3 million. The state is certainly putting a lot more dollars in support of our students, so $1.3 million for this year. The Futures for Frontliners is a program that was first rolled out when we closed for, when the state was closed for the pandemic, Futures for Frontliners were individuals who worked between April and June of 2020, when the state was closing down, they were work, they were essential workers, and so the state recognized and started the Futures for Frontliners, so it was just that three-month period, and if those students worked for essential services, then they're eligible for the Futures for Frontliners. They had only until December of 20, December 31st of 20 to apply for the program, so, and they had four years to kind of finish, so you can see, the number of those students has dropped off, because they no longer can be starting that program. But in 2223, we had 362 students with $641,000. One of the things that's changing with the state, Michigan Reconnect, for a short period of time, until November 15th or 24th, they are lowering the eligible age from 25 to 21. So it's not a permanent change, but they have gotten some additional money for this year, and so students in that age group, 21 to 24, will be eligible to enroll until November 15th. We also have a new scholarship from the State of Michigan, the Michigan Achievement Scholarship, which began in fall '23, it's for students who have graduated in fall '23, and they can get up to three years of tuition, about $2750, that'll cover tuition, again, it's for students who have an expected family contribution, that's $25,000 or below, and again, they, and they have to enroll full-time. Our childcare scholarships, over the last five years, really proud of the fact Our childcare scholarships, over the last five years, um, really proud of the fact, in twenty-two, twenty-three, we had fifty-one student parents um, that received over a hundred and forty thousand dollars in childcare scholarships. And so there's many more children that were supported, but it was fifty-one student parents. If we look at, um, you know, we just talked about the number of graduates we had, so we had thirty-five, eighty-three certificates, certificates and degrees issued. That was to twenty-seven hundred individual, unique graduates. So we looked at all the kind of financial aid we've just been talking about, Pell Grants, foundation scholarships, presidential scholarships, emergency grants. So fifty-six percent of the students who graduated just this year, um, received some kind of financial aid while they were here. So I think you, it shows the significance of these dollars and how they support our students. The financial aid infographic is also available, and again, the, the, the middle, the, the left side covers the annual data for financial aid, and the right covers Fall two thousand twenty-three. I want to give special thanks to Andrew Mungia and the rest of the financial aid staff for putting, you know, supporting our financial aid. Um, again, they also had a clean audit, I'm going to recognize the, the clean audit that they had earlier that was mentioned this year. As we transition to Fall twenty-two, twenty-three, again, as mentioned earlier, our official count date was October fifteenth. On that date, we had ten thousand eight hundred and eleven students enrolled. That was above sixty-five students, above where we were last year, so it was zero point six percent increase over Fall twenty-two. We had eighty-eight, over eighty-eight thousand credits, that was down slightly, about five hundred credits, zero point six percent over Fall twenty-two. Our full-time students remained leveled, full-time students are students who are enrolling in twelve or more credits, that remained level at twenty-six percent. Our average credit load for all of our degree-seeking students, so those who have said they plan to get a degree or certificate at Washtenaw, went from eight point seven to eight point eight credits for the semester. Our average credit load of non-degree-seeking students went from seven to six point five. If we look at the intent of our students, um, you can see that we have seventy-two percent of our students for Fall twenty-three are degree-seeking. Um, the degree-seeking is the, um, the associate degree, the blue bar is the associate degree transfer, which is green, the gray certificate, and the certificate transfer, which is the bright green. You can see that, um, our degree-seeking students have declined the last couple of years. Um, but that is because the state does not, the state and the federal government do not allow us to report any of our dual-enrolled students as degree-seeking. So even if they're a middle college student and have to complete a degree or certificate, the state says no. So they, so that has dropped off our number of degree-seeking students. And fifty-eight percent of our students have an intent to transfer. So that would be, um, students who have associate degree transfer, certificate transfer, or the purple bar, excuse me, the yellow bar at the top, is just students who are not degree-seeking, but they've indicated they're just here to get transfer credits. We look at the average, sorry?
On those transfer, the yellow bar?
Yes.
Um, some of those people, I've actually met some that just come to get one or two classes to transfer to a degree program at a four-year university.
Correct.
Where they also are.
Correct.
Can't we count those as degree-seeking?
No. Because I understand they're degree-seeking, but they have, for us to count them as degree-seeking, they have to be degree-seeking for us. So they have to say, I'm planning to get a degree or certificate at Washtenaw. Um, that's who we get to count as degree-seeking. If they're just coming and taking transfer credit, they're degree-seeking at the other institution.
Gotcha.
So for Fall twenty-three, our average age is twenty-six. Um, you can see that we, um, the bright green bar is our seventeen-and-under students. Um, we have more dual-enrolled students, um, this fall semester. And you can see that during, um, COVID, we kind of lost our eighteen-to-twenty, that next green group, but those students have started, um, returning to campus. Our minority composition for this fall semester is thirty-eight point three percent, and that compares to thirty-six point three percent in Fall twenty-two. Again, this minority composition is based on the students who reported a ethnicity. Our Asian students were at seven, you can see African-American sixteen, um, two or more is six percent. Again, about, um, a little over four hundred students, um, did not report their ethnicity, about four percent of the students enrolled for this fall semester. And graphically, you can see, um, where, again, we are, we're picking up, um, Asian students and Hispanic students over the last five years. For Fall twenty-three, we had our increased number of dual-enrolled high school students, went from eleven fifty-seven to thirteen thirty-four. Um, our top five feeder high schools for new students, um, Pioneer, Huron, Dexter, Brighton, and Celine. We look at our dual enrollment partners, um, they're listed here in terms of order of, of height. You see our Washtenaw, not height, number, sorry. Washtenaw Technical Middle College has four hundred and twenty-two students enrolled for, um, Fall semester, followed by Dexter, which is one of our newer middle college partners. Pinkney is also a middle college partner because they're part of the Livingston County Middle College. Michigan Islamic Academy, Howell, which is again part of the Livingston Middle College program. Unionville Sebeling, I'm very proud of this school, they're a school up in the thumb. And they love our classes. And so even though they are a part, really a partner with Delta, Delta is a forty-five-minute drive away, and so they really like using our classes to meet, and it's a very small district, but um, they like using our just, our schools, courses to support their students. Um, Ypsilanti Community Schools is also a middle college partner with us, that thirty-five includes both middle college students and regular students. And then Annaburhur and Chelsea. So WTC, WTMC, again, used to have a larger proportion of our dual-enrolled. Um, last fall, they were thirty-seven percent of our dual-enrolled students, this fall, they're thirty-two percent. Thirty-seven percent of the students who are dual-enrolled, or four hundred and ninety-eight, are middle college students. So again, the state is really putting a big press on increasing the number of middle college students who allow them to graduate with, um, from high school with college credentials, college degree. If we look at our dual-enrolled students, thirty-five percent are taking face-to-face classes only. Um, forty-six percent are taking dual, or excuse me, taking DL or virtual only. And then an additional nineteen percent are taking a combination of those classes. If we look at the enrollments, again, similar to what we did to annuals, so our fall enrollments, these are our face-to-face enrollments. These are enrollments by college, or by, excuse me, by division. Um, and in Fall twenty-three, forty-five percent of our enrollments, a little over, oh, close to twelve thousand of those enrollments, are face-to-face for this Fall semester. Our distance learning enrollments, uh, forty-one percent of all the enrollments for this Fall, a little, uh, over ten thousand. Again, you see the distribution by division. Our virtual, again, starting in, um, Fall nineteen is when we first had those. Um, and those represent nine percent of the enrollments for this Fall. And our blended, again, a combination of some online and in-person, is five percent of the enrollments for this Fall semester. Just giving you a sense of kind of what-
Trustee DeBarty, question? Yeah, one, uh, question, if, could you go back to that last chart? And I've been wondering this throughout all of these. What are these divisions? I see the initials down here, but you, I'm guessing the brown was math, science, engineering, and technology?
Yes, so the blue is ATP, which is Advanced Technologies and Public Service Careers. BCT is Business and Computer Technologies, that's the green. Um, health is the red. HSS, Humanities, Social Science, Humanities, Social and Behavioral Sciences is the yellow. And math, science, and engineering is the orange.
Okay, thank you.
I'll spell those out next time, sorry.
Thank you.
So again, if we look at our students and kind of one of, they fit in one of these buckets. So the students who are taking face-to-face classes only, um, is thirty-four percent of our student body for this Fall, a little over thirty-six hundred. And you can see the composition of, you know, forty-nine percent female, forty-four percent are below age, age below twenty, and the sixty-five percent of those students are in district, that reside in Washtenaw County. For the students who are taking a combination of face-to-face and some DL, either online or virtual, it's twenty-four percent of our students, close to twenty-six hundred students. Again, those, that jumps to fifty-five percent female, um, fifty-eight percent in district. And, um, the students who are taking online only, online and or virtual only, it's forty-two percent of the student body, a little over forty-five hundred students. Fifty-seven percent of those students are female, and forty percent are in district. Like to thank everyone, I'd like to thank all the faculty and staff for supporting all of our enrollment initiatives. A special thanks to Kathy Curry and her registrar team on all, a lot of this data. Patrick Bracco and Kami Davis, this, these profiles are both coming out of the Argos pro, system, the Argos reporting system. It's very helpful for us. Uh, Shane Redman and our institutional research team did a lot of the helping with the graphs and the data. And Laura Turner and Rich Resler for the beautiful infographics and putting the books together. And, um, winter registration has already started, and the winter twenty-twenty-four semester begins on January eighth.
Impressive compilation of data, thank you. Questions? Trustee DeBarty?
Is, is this PowerPoint in these packets? Because I'd like to spend some time looking at it more closely.
Absolutely, we'll get you a copy.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions of, Trustee Milstein?
So I have a couple of questions, they're not in any specific order, they're just notes that I've taken. Um, so with regards to gender, um, are we in a position where we can add non-binary? Um, into the mix, just because a lot of people are starting to identify that? And instead of choosing, other people like to skip that question? Um, are we in a position where we can start doing that as we enroll more students?
Oh, we can look at that, we can look on the systems and see if we can do that and add that.
I think that would be important, just, I'm seeing more and more things online about, you know, sort of also as a recruiting tool of students coming in and just feeling comfortable, uh, and included. With regards to our college grads shrinking, is there a reason for that? Is that a, across-the-country sort of thing?
Um, yes, we, we had a big increase, so even though we're ti-, down a tiny bit, we had a huge jump last year. We had a little over twenty percent jump last year, so that's kind of like, kind of going, trailing a little back to a little bit more normal of what we have. Um, so I think that's, that's part of that. But I think there are less, in terms of kind of nationwide, less graduates. And again, the re, both those reconnect and frontliners programs is to address students who have been swirling around. Uh, and a lot of the reconnect students, most of the reconnect students have college credit, but they've never graduated. So they kind of took classes, and sometimes they've taken classes at multiple institutions, but they've never kind of put everything together to graduate. And so again, the state's really focusing on getting those students, reconnecting them, so that they can get a credential to help kind of the economic development of the state.
Um, what do you see the future for face-to-face versus the other modalities for learning? So, you know, I see the percentages and they've, they're, they're becoming pretty consistent. So is that the future, or do you see face-to-face dropping? Where do you, where do you see the future, what's happening in the-
So we're still, you know, we're still, um, bringing more sections back on campus. Um, we do have some, some, you know, groups that are still preferring online, um, especially in the summer. So if you look at our kind of online enrollments annually, we have a lot of guest students in the summer. And so those students are preferring, sometimes those students are local, co-, local university students, and they're taking classes with us, but sometimes they've gone home for the summer. Um, so I don't see the change in summer so much in terms of more face-to-face, but, um, in fall and winter, we are bringing, trying to bring more sections back to campus and getting more students interested in on-campus classes.
And then with regards to outside, um, so external, uh, financial aid, who, who else do we have outside of the foundation? What are some of the other outside sources?
We have, um, Kiwanis, and we have the Rotary, so we have, those are the primary groups for external. Besides the foundation, the foundation makes up the largest part of external.
Okay, thank you. And then with regards to the programs, um, so looking over some of the programs that have had pretty substantial, uh, declines in, uh, credit hours. How is it looked upon? What, what's the method to determine whether it's time to sunset a program? Or whether it's time to add additional marketing dollars to market the program? What's the assessment that's done over a period of time? So seeing some of these programs where we've seen fifteen percent decreases, uh, or more, what's, how, what's the, what's the, what's the method for determining whether it's time to sunset a program, or whether we need to put, you know, have, uh, our marketing department do more to market the program, or there may be other avenues to increase enrollment in those programs?
So depending on the subject, so, because when you're looking at like credit hours, enrollments, those are by subject as opposed to program. And so it's looking at, you know, um, you know, what makes sense. It's difficult, I think, with COVID, because everything kind of took, got kind of slammed. And so as we come back looking at what programs are staying back on track, you know, continuing to get students, there is an evaluation process that's happening, um, for all the programs. And, um, that's been, you know, and then everybody looks at the, we have all these profiles to look at. Um, but it is something that's evaluated by the deans and instructional areas as well.
And how often is that, like, so we see these numbers, you know, we're going to see them again next year, you know? When, when does that assessment start? And when are we starting to look at these programs and figuring out how to provide resources for them? Or potentially not provide resources?
Do you want to answer that? No, go ahead. You were like looking, you-
If she gives me permission. Um, well, there, uh, we have a program review process, um, that is done, um, well, every two years, I believe.
Yes, every two years, it's being done right now.
And, um, actually, the HLC, it, that was one of the things that they noted with us, that they wanted us to improve our program review process. And that, and your question is a good one, because it's exactly what they asked us. Um, what do you do with programs when there's a decline in enrollment? And also, what was also good about your comments is there's a lot of op, you know, when you look at the number, there's a lot of reasons for a number. And as you mentioned, you know, sometimes it's because we don't have the adequate equipment or something in the room. Sometimes it's because the instructor may need more professional development, or perhaps the class isn't offered in the right modality or time that the, the students, um, students prefer it. Um, and sometimes, um, it's just, um, at a point where it's no longer a class of interest. And, uh, that's when we look at that program and see where we can cap and curtail it to get, and we have a teach-out. Fortunately, that doesn't happen often. And the other thing you mentioned is the marketing piece, marketing where we can. But as you know, and as the board knows, I'm looking at him because he has the question, okay? Um, as the board knows, the, um, marketing only helps, you know, if everything we have there, offering it at the right time, you know, having the right, uh, the resources there, um, at, all of that, then marketing can help a program, so.
Well, and that leads me to the next question, which is, you know, we've also have quite a few programs that have seen a fifteen percent or more increase. So maybe that's where our marketing department starts looking at and saying, this is how we grow some of these programs and some of these classes, um, to offset some that we may not have in the future. So I think marketing works both ways, promoting what's successful and promoting something that may be successful down the road.
Absolutely.
So I, I, I'm a little surprised that it's only every two years that, you know, we're doing this-
Is it every two or every, every two?
I just feel like, especially with the world as quickly as we're changing now, I think that should be a more frequent thing that should happen. Especially if we do need to put marketing dollars behind, um, some of these programs.
Yeah. Do you have another question?
I do, go ahead.
Well, no, go ahead.
Um, so one of the comments that I saw in here, which I was a little bit surprised by, but maybe I, I misunderstood. So health sciences, um, decreased, so the, it's the credit hours. The credit hours decreased five percent. Which we've been hearing, you know, the medical field, the medical field, everybody, medical field needs more people. I, in my head, previously to reading this, I just assumed everything in health sciences was on the upswing. Is there a reason why those programs decreased five percent? Is there a reason why those programs decreased five percent?
So again, when you're, so when you're looking at programs, those are, those are courses. And so, right, so I know that, like, the health science classes, like the SENA class is no longer required for the nursing program, which it used to be. So that's, you know, we kind of capped in terms of how many sections we run of that. But also I think like some of the other classes were not running as full as they were before. So certainly all of our second-tier programs are nursing, radiography, PTA, those, those courses are all maxed out. We always have more applicants than students. But like surge tech, sterile processing, some of those programs were not as full as some of, as, as the other ones.
And if I may, but so the comment that I wanted to make is really, it's good, you said, so what you said is that in some programs, like nursing, which is an outstanding program, and it wasn't one of your questions, but it's a good time to explain this, you cap it because we just could never afford, I mean, no matter how much money we had to complete, you know, to keep growing a program for, where their ratio in clinicals is one to ten and the cost is incredible. And you've seen in all colleges do this, like another college that I worked at, it was their culinary program, was so successful, but it was extremely expensive to run. So it comes to a point where you say, okay, we have to cap this now. And, and that, that's also some of the numbers. But I really appreciate the discussion on what, you know, on enrollment and would love to perhaps sometime have a retreat where we can talk about this process because I bet there's a lot of questions about it. So, thank you.
I have a question.
That's okay.
This is it. Sorry. Is there any, so this is a lot of data and I, I have more questions, but I'll, I'll ask that later. Is there anything that was surprising when you got this report? That you looked at and said, huh, interesting?
Yeah, huh. So I didn't, I think what's been, what's, everything's fairly consistent, you know, so usually we're like do, do, do. The minority enrollment going, the minority percentages going up the way they did was a surprise because that's generally been pretty steady. And to see, you know, in this again, annual, a, a, two, more than a two percent increase in Asian students and also in, in a big increase in Hispanic. Again, that's coming, part of that's our guest students that are, we're getting from universities in the summer. But that's also pouring, you know, usually our guest students would have, you know, generally only come in the summer. But we have a lot of guest students from the University of Michigan who are continuing on in our math classes in the fall semester as well. So I think that speaks to some of those increases because generally we don't have that, you know, generally it's like steady adding. So that was, that was a surprise to me. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything further?
Thank you very much. I appreciate your graciousness.
Trustee McKnight-Morton, thank you for your patience.
Oh, no problem. Okay, I know I ask this every year, Linda. My question is that, I'm, I'm, last time we saw this, the, the drop in females was there. And the males were high and females were low. I'm seeing a reverse on this. Do you happen to have any type of, any idea of this reversal? Because for me, we were doing really good at, at a while there, at a clip where we had some really good males participating, coming to the school. And now it's dropping off. And so I, I don't know, maybe you don't know, but there's something that, that's, that's caught my eye and the females going up. So that's great. I'm glad of that. Then another thing, I'm very happy to see the Native Americans more coming before, than before. I'm still pushing for more Hispanics, saying, I know they're here. I see them. But it'd be, be nice if more could somehow reach out with this marketing thing to get them coming in more than they have been. Now, I can't go with Native Hawaiian. That, that's a tough one. Ah, you know, that's a tough one. I, I'm not sure how they get here.
It's a big decision, I think, to move here from Hawaii.
You, you got that right.
We still have a Native American faculty, Native Hawaiian faculty member.
Did you really? Oh, my goodness. Yeah, bless their heart.
M D C has a, has a consortium of twelve Native American tribes around the state of Michigan that they're working with collectively to help them economically and to get recognition for their.
Well, yeah, I know the MCCA, as of last year, two years ago, we adopted in our constitution to have two Indian tribes from up north. I think one of them was the Jibewa, Jibewa, and I can't think of the other one, but anyway, so we have those. But I, I'm just, I'm glad to see this, they're starting to trickle down to this lower part of Michigan and then we can have them in, on our rolls. This, but I'm still looking at how is it that we can put, make another big push for these other outlining genders and ethnicities.
Okay, some of those groups are also in that two or more group, which is growing also.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Trustee DeVarty? I want to piggyback on some of the things that Trustee Milstein was on. In terms of non-binary, just judging from my young, or my late twenties children, many of their friends identify as non-binary. And I think that is, I really support, if we can, adding that as a, as a category. I think it will speak to people in a way that will encourage them potentially to apply as well. Is identify them the way they want to be identified. The second thing, I was struck, in all the minority things, there's nothing for Arab-American. And we're in southeast Michigan, which is one of the highest concentrations of Arab-American population in this country. And then we have in the feeder institutions, we've got the, what is it, the Islamic Middle Academy?
Michigan Islamic Academy, yes.
Which may have many Arab, may not all be Arab-American, but probably some Arab-Americans. And that, that's the only place where I saw some, something called out, but they're called out as one of the feeder institutions that we get people from. But it's not, in all of our minor, minority metrics, it's not a category.
Right, so those, the minority categories are the federal government's group, groupings. So that's, you know, when students or staff are reporting, it's the categories that we report back to the federal government. So we don't make those categories up. Those are the categories that the feds define.
And they don't have an Arab-American category?
Those, the categories that are listed there are what is defined.
And then Trustee's Milstein's observation about the health sciences. I know we have one of the best nursing programs in, in the region and potentially in the country for a community college. And we have so much strength in some of the areas. And the president has said we are like maxed out on what we can enroll. And you said, you know, we, we get more applications than we have slots for many of them. But, and this speaks to marketing. The areas where we're not filled up, we can market the strength of our overall health educate, health science education program and try to target constituencies or, or market those programs that we, we could bring people in and get them introduced into that field. And many of them may actually, once they get their certification, for one thing, they may say, oh, I want to continue and do more. And apply to go on in the, in that field. But that's, I see that as a marketing issue to, to build on our strength in that area in, in order to fill the programs that are not filled.
Right. And some of those areas, you know, before our pharmacy program, pharmacy tech program was a credit program and now it's a non-credit boot camp program run on VPI Tucker's area. So some of those areas, some of those courses get shifted to non-credit boot camps to address the need for the employers. So that's what's happened in some of those areas as well.
Any further questions? Please.
Well done.
Thank you.
Just one more follow-up. So the demographic data that we collect, is it, do we collect this information? Because this is the information that the federal, that we report to the state and ultimately the federal government. Do we collect any data above and beyond that? Or how, how do we choose what data we collect and what data we report on?
So the data that's collected is minimally what we need to send to the state and the feds. So our iPads are, you know, the, it, the state, the federal data, again, the ethnicity that you're collecting, the two or more, the, the, the gender. And for some of those categories, you know, the feds don't, don't give us, it's male, female. That's all you get. You don't have a choice of anything else on the federal reports or the state reports. So, but, but in terms of demographic, in term, I like their, their background, tell me what you're thinking.
So I don't see sexual orientation on here. Do we, is there a reason why we don't collect that information?
We do not collect that, no.
And is it because for the, I, I guess where I'm trying to go with it, do we collect the minimum information that we need to submit to the, to the state? Or do we collect more? Like, how, how do we decide what information we collect?
So we, we don't, we try not to collect more because we're trying not to have the application be way more than it needs to be. So, you know, it's, it's enough information to identify them. So name, address, birth date, in the cases where they're getting financial aid, social security number. And then we, you know, so we can build, have enough information to build a student record for them and I'd be able to identify that this is actual a student because we go through identity verification to make sure that they're actually an individual that can open a school account. We don't ask, we do not ask for sexual orientation. That is not, this, it's not in our system. So we would have to, you know, do some customizations to our systems to collect that.
And it's just one, I'm just trying to figure out, and sexual orientation is the only one, like income level, things of that nature.
Income level, we do not ask.
So it's, we're just, we're asking the information that we need to report to the state.
Right, so we don't, so we would ask, like, what program if they're planning to get, if they're planning to get a degree or certificate with us? If they're planning, if they're planning to use federal financial aid? Because if they say yes, then we only, when they go to select their program, we only give them the programs that are financially eligible. We have some programs that are not. So we only give them programs that are aid-eligible. We ask them their, what their program, if they're plan, you know, when their kind of course preference in terms of they planning to take classes in person, online, online only? Do they, are they interested in day classes, evening classes, if they have preferences for those, we ask that. We also have, we have a questionnaire or part of the application where we just, you know, as, as they see themselves becoming a college student, do they anticipate any barriers? For, you know, academic barriers, food barriers, childcare barriers, learning disability, any kind of barriers, transportation, housing, food, insecurities. So any students who identify any barriers that they think might be barriers to their success, we follow up with resources and how they can access those resources on our campus. So we don't ask income, you know, certainly if they're applying for financial aid, the FASL becomes an information in terms of their income level. We don't want to give this applicant any sense that their income level is going to, you know, impact them being admitted or not. And for some individuals, I, you know, for some of those questions, you think about the questions that could be asked. We don't want to make the student think that any of those questions are impacting the decision of whether they're admitted or not.
I, I guess where I'm thinking is having some additional demographic information may offer us the opportunity to make the college more inclusive, to make them feel that, you know, they're part of the community here, if we have some additional information. But I also understand we don't want to make the application that it's, you know, takes two hours to fill out. So, but I think it's, you know, we talk more and more about inclusion. I think that might be an opportunity down the road. I don't know if we can add additional questions that may make it so they feel more included in this, in the community here. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Trustee Hatcher?
Is there a paper version of the application?
That's a very good question. Yes.
Why do you think it was that big a deal?
Yes. No, wait, that's, it's used, it's used limit, it's very limited use. Like if we have a contract class, we might take a paper application. But generally, students are applying online.
It's the same application as they see online.
Yes.
So maybe board members would like to see it.
Okay, we can get a printout of the application.
I'd love to.
The application, when you go online, it kind of, based on how you answer questions, you see different questions. So if, if you say, have you ever attended any prior college? Then you'll get a question about what colleges have you attended, how many credits? If you, if you don't say yes to that question, you won't even see that. So the.
Maybe board members should go online and look at the application.
Okay.
Well, either way, there you go.
But we can get a copy of that for you.
Any further questions? Trustee DeVarty? One more. As I'm looking at this, and I know sometimes when we meet with legislators, when we do our legislative visit to Washington DC to meet, meet with congresspeople on the, in the education arena. So I'm looking at these in, because these are kinds of simple things that we could put in their, hand to them to give them an understanding of our strengths here at the college. But there's one quick thing that just jumped off at me. The average annual tuition and fees, and as everybody knows, this is something that really I worry about because I want higher education to be as economically accessible as possible. And I see the Washington Community College number here and the Michigan four-year colleges and universities. Is that in-district tuition for us? And for Michigan four-year, is that in-state?
It's in-state and includes the publics and the privates.
Oh, so it includes private universities and colleges also?
It's all the four-year schools, yes.
Which.
And it's their in-state tuition.
Okay. I'm just kind of curious. I would, I, just as an out of, if I were coming from out of state and wanted to go to the University of Michigan, I would try to go to Washington Community College for two years and transfer.
Correct.
Because of the cost difference. And the cost difference is so much higher.
Correct. The out-of-state tuition is, is way higher than that, yes.
Okay, maybe if, if we do the visit to the congresspeople again, that might be something I'd want to look at as data that we could provide to them. I, but I, I have to think about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything further? We good? Thank you. Provost Blakey, nice report. We'll move into monthly reports now. There's a personnel recommendation in front of us tonight for action. Allow me to read the recommendation, then you can see what you're motioning. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the personnel recommendations as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
Still support.
And there's support? Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The motion is approved. Thank you. Are there any more remarks from the members of the Board of Trustees that they would like to share with us tonight? Anybody have comments that they would like to make? President Belanca? Trustee Hatcher?
I would just like to say that the flag raising this morning and breakfast and program was very nice and I always appreciate. and program was very nice, and I always appreciate it. And this time, there was a special recognition of soldiers who didn't come back with a special table and flower and symbolic setting for those, and it was very touching and very well done. So thanks to all who were involved.
Would you hazard a guess of how many people gathered this morning?
Wasn't that cold?
You survived?
I did, and the bagpipes were very nice.
Any other comments? President Blanca?
Yes. First of all, thank you for attending today, trustee Hatcher. Thank you so much. That was a great discussion on the data that we shared. And I really, I appreciate it. And we'll have more discussions on, as you go through this information, if there are more questions that you might have. We are, once we get back, we'll be scheduling a retreat. And this would be a good time to look at some things that we can talk about, if you'd like to do that. Our foundation's, WCC's annual scholarship event, our luncheon, is December 8th. So I look forward to seeing everyone there. And actually, before I say Happy Thanksgiving, which is what I'm going to say, Linda, that was an outstanding presentation. And I would like to really thank you for your leadership. And not only you, but Clarence Jennings, for all that you do, and your entire team. And I would like the boards to know how difficult it is to work in that department. The financial aid, the changes that they have made this year, every single program that you see means there's a change in financial aid. And we have been, you know, it's like the food chain of employees. We, you know, they come over and U of M will come and steal our financial aid people, or someone else will steal our people. And we are constantly and constantly looking at financial aid replacements. And it's, and it's happening everywhere. So it's not because of poor leadership, or it's just, first of all, the job is incredibly challenging. And so, thank you, thank you very, very much for all that you do. I appreciate it, as well as your teams and all that they do. Thank you. And lastly, we won't be seeing each other until after Thanksgiving. So have a wonderful Thanksgiving.
One note, President Blanca, I've got the scholarship luncheon on December 6th, Wednesday, December 6th, you said the 8th a minute ago.
Guess what? You know, earlier today, we had a conversation.
Yes.
About glasses.
It is December 6th.
Good, let the record show, luncheon is on December 6th.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving into old business now. Renewal of Oracle Support Services. It's an action item, and there's a recommendation that the Washoe Community College Board of Trustees approve a contract with Oracle Support Services covering the next three years, November 28, 2023, through November 27, 2026, in an amount not to exceed $518,744. Do I hear a motion?
Moved.
Moved and supported. Is there any discussion on this motion?
Alex, good.
You're all in favor?
I'm all in favor.
Well, they're all in, good. Vanessa, would you please call the roll? Yes?
President DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee?
Yes.
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 Thank you. The motion is approved. Next, hiring and recruitment software recommendation. This is an action item. The recommendation is that the Washoe Community College Board of Trustees approve the five-year contract extension for the payment of maintenance fees in the amount of $257,037, and the one-time payment of an implementation fee of $23,196, for an amount not to exceed $280,000, and $280,233. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Got a motion and I've got support. Is there any further discussion? Trustee McKnight Morton, please.
Thank you. This is what we discussed the last time meeting, this Oracle. Okay, just wanted to double check. Thank you.
Vanessa, would you please call the roll?
Chair Milch?
Yes.
President DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee Fleming?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
Trustee Milchine?
Yes.
Motion's approved. Thank you. Moving to new business, tab E in your packets, 2022 Emeritus Staff Status Recipients. Vice President Swick? Are you going to enlighten us on this one, please?
Yes, consistent with the policy on Emeritus staff, the title of Emeritus may be granted to a member of the faculty administration or support staff if the staff member has served the college of distinction for 15 or more years and has retired from the college. The action item before you, which is tab E, contains the names of all those individuals who meet that criteria and wish to receive that designation.
A collective 261 years of service, a dozen parties here. Trustee Hatcher?
I'd just, I'd like to add something, and I don't think Margaret Green would mind my pointing it out. But since there were no minority new faculty hired, I'd just like to point out that Margaret Green is a minority member of the English Department for 21 years. And she was identified as a minority candidate as a student and supported throughout her career at U of M and her graduate program to be a full-time employee at Washoe Community College. So there's a, there's one, another way of identifying good minority candidates. She was identified as a tutor by the English Department and supported, not financially, but emotionally, and to be a full-time member of the department.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Tab F on the packets tonight.
Are we having a discussion?
Well, if so much you wanted one.
Well, I'm just wondering if you'd like to move it this evening?
Does it matter? I mean, we'll still have it. If we do it next month, it'll still be before Christmas.
That's true. Be good for Christmas. All right.
Okay. Moving to interim VP Tucker. We're going to talk about the approval of 2023, 2024 Faculty Sabbaticals, please.
Yes, sir. As customary before the board tonight is for discussion and eventual action on an additional faculty member. The sabbatical committee met October 3rd and has recommended Jill Jepson, a faculty member in our art discipline, to take a one-semester sabbatical to look at printmaking, which she presently teaches, but in a clean and green kind of, you know, process. So she's going to go to a one- to two-week residency to be able to investigate how she can incorporate those green principles that are more eco and environmental-friendly in her existing classes.
Any comments?
An extra or leftover sabbatical?
It is a leftover sabbatical.
Trustee McKnight Morton, comment? No comment. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. At this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn this regular meeting of the Board of Trustees.
Moved. Support.
Got a motion and support. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned.